John. Could I welcome everyone?
Just where it's still alive.
Could I welcome everyone this evening to the meeting of Faversham Town Council? I will start with reading letters from the public. If they're unable to get into the meeting, our first letter is regarding St Nicholas allotments. Following my public questions submitted to and considered at your meeting of the 7th of September 2020, I would comment as follows. One, although Madam Mayor requested that a written reply be sent to me regarding what you intend to do, I have yet to receive a response. Two, section 106, I note the comments made by the town clerk regarding her not having pursued the section 106 monies in the previous four months, apparently due to the planning permission having not been signed off by Swale Borough Council for the security fence. However, I have spoken with Graham Thomas, area planning officer at Swale in this respect, and more specifically regarding David Simmons brokering of an agreement for early release. Graham Thomas commented, as David Simmons had remarked, early release to allow the fencing to go ahead, Graham understandably concluded that the money had already been paid to Faversham Town Council by Swale. And two, any section 106 money due to Faversham Town Council is not dependent on the signing of the fence planning application. The officers dealing with such funds do not check whether planning consent is required or has been given granted. Graham Thomas suggests that the money should be chased by you accordingly. Three, the aspired path through the middle of the allotment site. I know the town clerk's comment regarding the path through the centre of the site no longer being part of the development plans. However, I spoke to Neil Mantell, director of LRM, planning and representative for Vistery Bovis last week, who confirmed this is still on the current plans as far as Swale Borough Council are concerned, with access via a gate. It is indeed no longer the aspiration of Vistery to have access, but they are still negotiating with Swale Borough Council regarding the final layout of the eastern side of the development site bordering the allotment. And then allotment sites. Following the disbending of the Community Services Committee, efficiently chaired by councillor Claire Belton, please clarify which committee has responsibility for the four, soon to be five allotment sites for the town? I have been informed that this is policy and finance, although I have yet to observe all allotments being mentioned at any of their meetings. The second letter is reference to benches. That, sorry, that letter was sent to us by Maria Newman. And this letter is sent from Mr Oswald Jones. With reference to latter agenda item, minutes on Public Spaces Committee. Benches. Subsequent to some 12 years debate about possible locations of benches, it was recently noted that three sites along the Westbrook might be considered. One bench with back was installed to the east of the beach close footbridge. After just two comments, one since withdrawn, it has been observed as minuted that it had been reorientated now facing onto the Westbrook. Access to it is now via a muddy patch instead of the hard surface. It is arguably too near to the stream, raising safety concern with ones back to the pathway. There are additional security concerns from people approaching silently from behind. May it be agreed that future decisions about location and orientation be discussed through the committee and not arbitrarily incurred? Looking forward, they remain subject to funding the two other proposed locations. Orientation yet to be agreed. That's from Mr Oswald Jones. And then there is an item, item 10 this evening. We've got a comment about that from Maria Newman. Dear Madam Mayor and councillors, I write in support of the motion to use Zoom to enable appropriate verbal public participation at Faversham Town Council meetings. You will see from my earlier email, subject the St Nicholas allotments, that in the knowledge of your response on the evening of the 7th of September, I had further comments to add to the debate. Worse still, as I have received no reply following your meeting, I was unable to discover what was discussed until the minutes were posted on the Faversham Town Council website on the 1st of October. Subsequently, this allotment conversation has become somewhat protracted. Would anyone wish to comment on any of those letters that we have received? Councillor Jackson.
Right, thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr Oswald Jones. If I can shed some light on the bench. As one of the board councillors regarding this bench, after consulting on three possible sites, two where we had objections from residents, we decided to put this forward to the Open Spaces Committee. On being installed, a resident objected to myself and to the town facilities manager, stating that anybody sitting on it could look into her bedroom, which is absolutely correct because I went down and checked myself. Also, a member of the Westbrook Committee has noted that it was facing the wrong way because the idea of the bench was for people to sit on it, enjoy the view and to have a rest on the walk back from the town. We was told that it was quite easy by the town clerk to move the bench by just unscrewing it and turning it around. So we thought we'd give it a try, which we have done. Having spoken to Mr Winters, who the person who objected to it, he was quite happy. I said to him, how do you feel? He said, I'm quite happy now. It's not looking into my bedroom at all. As for the safety comments that Mr Oswald Jones has commented on, the bench is no nearer the stream than what it was originally. It's sitting on the same concrete slab that was put there in the beginning. As regarding somebody creeping up on you, I would say it's more likely if somebody was of a mind to creep up on you from the grass, where it is a lot quieter than somebody walking along the footpath where you'd hear their footsteps. And I think Mr Oswald Jones raised another concern about the patch of gra-, well, he said it was a patch of mud, I think. It's actually grass and I don't think in bad weather, anybody will be sitting on this bench. And at the moment, it's just all grass there. So going forward, as nobody had said on the Open Spaces Committee, which way the bench was meant to go, we thought we'd give this a try for the residents. So I hope this answers your questions, Mr Oswald Jones. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Saunders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I want to respond to Mr Oswald Jones's letters as well. I won't go into the details of the positioning of the current bench, but I think it's worth emphasising that in the last meeting, the Public Spaces Committee, which Mr Oswald Jones was at, we did agree that future proposals for benches would come back to the committee and in relation to another bench on, near the Westbrook. It was left that there would be consultation with the Friends of the Westbrook and then we would come back with a proposal to the next committee meeting of the Public Spaces Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that clears that one up. Thank you. And any other comments? Councillor Williams?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment on the first letter regarding St Nick's allotments. So there's clearly a few items being highlighted here regarding this, the allotment site. I just wanted to sort of pick up on a few of the things. Now, I've been working with Adam Andrews on the allotments, particularly recently doing site inspections of both St Nick's and North Preston. Given the fact that the St Nick's allotments, and North Preston are both at this current stage, being by the town council until committees are formed, I do appreciate that the, there's members on both allotment sites are, you know, working hard to try and formulate as a committee over time. The, with regards to the section 106 money and also in fact with regards to the planning concerns that are raised here, as of yet, Swale Borough Council offices, Graham Thomas in this instance, we have had very, basically no communication from them. So Adam has tried to secure a meeting on site because it was clear from the planning meeting at Swale that the mitigation needed to be done in order to satisfy that. But it's very unclear what that mitigation was and we need to understand what that's going to be. I think, I think the situation we've got here is, it feels very much like the town council have been ignored and I feel like we are, it's been tribal offices trying to establish this meeting and it would be good to receive a response from officers to the town council. It seems strange to me that they happily speak to members of the public regarding this and, but not the owners of the site. So I do, I think that's a bit of a concern, which is something we need to push with Swale and also with the section 106 money. Again, we've had very little clarity on that at this stage. Also regarding the, where the allotments fit, I feel there was, at some point in history, there was, I believe Adam was given delegated authority with the allotment. So he's been managing it pretty much as his role as facilities manager, which I would like to stress at the moment, he's doing a brilliant job and he's liaising with myself, basically just as a councillor that is of interest in this, in this subject. I do feel like it might be worth though proposing that it goes, there is at least a bi-monthly report to a committee to get an update on what the allotment situation is. Now, I notice it mentions, and I think it's been mentioned before, the policy and finance here. I'm not sure if that is correct. If it's not, I'd like to propose perhaps it comes to climate and biodiversity or Public Spaces Committee, because they're probably the ones that have been most relevant to the allotment sites. I think that would give, particularly at the moment when we've got two allotment sites that have been run by the town council, I think it will provide some oversee or assist the officers in there in what they're trying to do. Because clearly, there's some, there is some ongoing issues. So in fact, I'll make a, I'll make a proper proposal, right? If I, if I can propose then that the, the allotments come under climate and biodiversity and there's a bi-monthly report and we work with the officer, work with Adam Andrews on this, which hopefully will help assist him on the issues that are going forward. I'm, I understand, we, I'm quite happy to help. I know Maria Newman would like a response, which is very, very understandable. And so in any of the points I've, I've mentioned there, I'm quite happy to help with the formulation of a letter response, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. And councillor Ben J Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councillor Williams. My understanding was when we did the reshuffle of the committees back at the start of the year, that allotments was going to climate and biodiversity anyway.
Yeah.
However, that may have got lost somewhere in amongst all the other movements that were going on, which is quite understandable, given that we're not exactly operating under normal circumstances in terms of getting these alterations done. And no doubt, had it been an in-person meeting, it probably would have been far easier to keep track of those proposed changes that were to be enacted. With regard to the planning, my understanding is that because of some issues regarding the eastern side of the Bovis Homes site, it's very difficult for Swale planners to meet with the town council and say what mitigation needs to take place because they need to finalise what's the eastern boundary of the Bovis Homes site is going to look like as well. So it may well be that, I mean, from my memory of that particular planning committee, it was a desire to have planting along the fence line that would soften it rather than maintain the, the sort of hard boundary that you get with these security fences. And no doubt, as the allotments grow and people utilise the fence posts to use for growing climbers and whatnot, some of that mitigation is not necessarily going to have to be done by the town council as it will be done through the natural process of growing things in an allotment. But as I say, I think it is to do with this Bovis Homes finalising their eastern boundary and what that's going to look like, which is causing the delay with the planning, with the planning officers. With regard to the 106, again, I would, I would stress the need to send a letter in from the council, perhaps signed by yourself, Madam Mayor, to both the finance officer and the head of planning at Swale to expedite the process of getting these funds.
Thank you. Yes, I think we can do that. So that's councillor Perkin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to second councillor Williams's proposal that the, that the allotments fall under climate and biodiversity, I think is a sensible proposal. And just on a very quick note about the bench, I do agree with Mr Oswald Jones in terms of further discussions about orientation falling into the Public Spaces Committee and that it might be helpful if there are complaints about things that happen within public spaces if they're referred back to committee members. That's all we've got to say about that. But I'm happy to second councillor Williams's proposal about the allotments.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just come in at this point, please? Just to, just to confirm, we can't actually make a proposal during public questions. It's not on the agenda, but I think it should be noted and come to the next appropriate agenda, possibly the climate and biodiversity or the next town council, whichever is the sooner.
But that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Positive. Thank you. We do that. Thank you. And any other comments regarding letters that we've received? No. Thank you. We'll move on to item one on the agenda, which is apologies.
I've received apologies from councillors Thomas and Barker.
Thank you. Declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest. Any members who have an interest to declare on an item on the agenda must declare the existence and nature of it the start of the meeting and act in accordance with the council's code of conduct S27 Localism Act 2011. I can't see everyone, but I take it that there are no pecuniary interests or non-pecuniary. Thank you. Item three. Minutes and matters to report. Can we take the minutes of the Monday, the 7th of September? Has anyone commented on the minutes being accepted? Do I have a proposal to accept those minutes?
Madam Mayor, if I can propose, we accept those minutes. Councillor T Martin.
Thank you. And have we a second up? No second up. I can't see everyone, so is someone seconded that I cannot see? No? Our second up? Can we all vote? Looks like everyone. Thank you. Everyone there? Oh, Mayor's announcements. Well, very quickly, I've just fudged a few. I knew it would be a long meeting. So what I did, I took out my diary of last year and looked at September for last year. Oh my goodness, what a difference from September of this year. But what I have to say, last year was fantastic. The hot festival, followed by the food festival, followed by awards at Faversham in Bloom, the horticultural awards. Then we had a golden wedding and then we had welcoming the fish, that there's shipping, there's boating with Bluey. I had my first oyster with Mark. And I opened the next step fostering Stone Street, went to the Royal British Legion in Tenderton and had Sir Hugh Robertson talking about 2012 Olympics, which was a fantastic evening. And then disability training, I'm sure the deputy mayor will agree with me, visiting the Abbey School and seeing the power chair activities that were going on up there was very emotional. And they're behind brick walls and we're just not always aware. So I hope we can focus on them this year as well, when they're up and running. Then Penthouse Place for the lieutenant awards, that was fantastic evening. My tour of Stonebridge Pond allotments was amazing. And I couldn't believe you could be in such a glorious place so close to home. It was fantastic. And all fantastic events, the whole of September was full. But you'd think that this September would be very subdued, but it isn't, not at all. Open three new businesses, welcome back last of the hospitality businesses, the markets, and then our swimming pool and cinema are back, music under the guild hall, wonderful entertainment. Things are popping back very slowly, very gradually. Not least, on the recreation ground, to see that on a Sunday, Saturday afternoon is brilliant. And it gives to everybody, and if the players, spectators. And of course, last week, the highlight, what everyone's been waiting for, the toilets opened. And that was a great relief to many people, believe me. So, so things are happening. Yet we've had two huge projects, as you know, 20's plenty, neighbourhood plan, engaging the community. They've all been very vocal and it's great that we've been able to do that. But the highlight, possibly for me of September, was the being able to award our KELC award, so well deserved, to the chairman of the Faversham Society, Harold Goodwin. I now am aware of the team of supporters and volunteers he has accumulated, but from my experience, I know a driver to any project is crucial, and that is Harold. My visits to our local schools, some still to be visited, showed me how fortunate this community is. All the head teachers were genuinely grateful to receive a thank you award. It meant a great deal, as they keep optimistic that they hope they can remain open throughout this winter. So September 2020 has been very different to that of a year ago. Covid has changed much, but not the community spirit that we should all be very proud of. Thank you. Right. Item six, climate and biodiversity. Councillor Williams, thank you.
Lovely. Thank you very much. I'd just like to present these as minutes, sort of cover a couple of things from the minutes, just to highlight a couple of projects we're working on. We're currently seeking people in the community to undertake sort of community gardening projects. And it's something that we resolved to potentially contribute by, by providing some finance to, to these groups if they so wish, subject to obviously them applying for, for money from the budget within the climate and biodiversity committee. We feel that that might be a, a good way of using that budget effectively within the town. Progressing with liaising with Swale Borough Council on their tree planting projects and any other biodiversity projects, so we can make sure it ties in with what the town council are trying to do. That's progressing quite, quite well. We've had communication from members of Faversham Tree Group who want to run the National Tree Week event again, albeit probably mainly virtual, but some physical event, which we've agreed to support. The, we decided to try and make some, some commitment to tree planting, obviously coming up to that, that part in the season. So we've agreed to source quotes and plant trees on the Bund from Brent's. And that will kickstart hopefully the tree planting season to coincide with the National Tree Week. Also resolved to donate a tree to each of the schools in Faversham as a kind of commemorative, sort of commemorative to the facts of the times we live in, but also the fact that it's a positive move forward and it helps with our climate emergency declaration. We've also agreed to provide out of the budget funding to, to purchase tree saplings to give to the community to plant around the town. And we will map this with hopefully some sort of pledge and mayor certificates, kind of get people really enthused and involved with tree planting. And given the fact that the town council doesn't really own the land to plant trees, we thought this is a really good way of offsetting the carbon from not only the town council, but the town itself. And we discussed other events that we could run in the future, albeit it's very difficult at the moment, and marking sort of national events such as Clean Air Day. Essentially, we're pressing on and I'm happy to propose that we accept these minutes. Thank you.
Do we have councillor Perkin?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Could we all vote on that? Thank you. Public Spaces Committee, item six. Councillor Saunders, would you like to speak on this item?
Okay, so thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of items before I propose the minutes. The Public Spaces Committee, its, I suppose, main item is the highways improvement plan, which is a set of improvements we want to make, which we generally are trying to get funding off Kent County Council for or to, to work with them on. And if you look at the minutes, you can see at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, we resolved to add some railings to the entrance to a footpath which leads between Osprey Range Road and Lionfield. And we also agreed to put in some additional bike racks at the bottom of the pedestrianised bit of West Street where it meets South Road. The other item I was going to particularly highlight to you was item 73 here, which is town centre improvement funding. You may be aware that Swale Borough Council has got some funding to improve town centres and the committee has had a discussion on what that money might be spent on with a view to putting proposals forward to Swale. And you can see that members were asked to go back to councillor Thomas and the town clerk if they had ideas. And I would, I would suggest that other members of the council might want to, to do that as well. Otherwise, we touched on CCTV and some of the challenges of using that effectively to stop some of the poor driving behaviour in the centre of the town. And we also touched on, well, a couple of other things which I won't go into. So I'd like to propose the minutes of the Public Spaces Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second up? Councillor Jackson? Could we all vote? Councillor Jackson, could we all vote or no other? Yeah. Thank you. Great, thank you. Lots happening there. And item seven, Policy and Finance. I believe councillor T Martin, as councillor Barker has very recently gone sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Policy and Finance is always a an interesting meeting. It covers many things. The only recommendation that I think we had, no, we were we resolved many things to accept quotations and what have you. And under the any other business section, the five of the Faversham request, I think councillor Knights would like to report on that.
Yes.
If I may hand over to her.
Thank you, councillor Knights.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think I've been misquoted a bit on this because we spoke in great length and rather than go through the great length of what we did speak on, if my words are going to be condensed, I would suggest that they would read that I said it was an excellent initiative, but it doesn't appear to be a charity. As it doesn't appear to be a charity, they may not fit the criteria for funding from the public purse. So I think that's a fairer quotation from me, if there's going to be one.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I think all I will do is I will propose these minutes be accepted by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second up? Councillor Hook, thank you.
I would second provided my amendment, please.
You're kind of in the dark. My eyes aren't that good. So councillor Knight, were you seconding?
No, I'm quite happy for the councillor to second, as long as my amendment goes in, then I'm quite happy with the minutes. Thank you.
Are we all happy with that as the? Yes. Thank you. And item eight, 20s Plenty. Councillor Saunders, would you wish to speak on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to propose the minutes of the 20s Plenty Committee. We've obviously now got a 20 mile an hour scheme in Faversham, which I'm sure we're all enjoying observing. So it might be easy for other members of the council to feel like we don't have to do anything more. But the discussion at the committee was very much that we did need to do more and we needed to be very active to ensure that we got a positive result in the KCC consultation, which runs until the end of March. So I would encourage other members of the council to get involved in the additional promotional activities that will be going on, which appear under the item on the KCC consultation. The other thing to emphasise to members of the council is that we would like to improve and develop the scheme and that may require additional physical interventions. So we did have an initial discussion about the kind of budget that the committee would need for next year. And I think that's something that members of the council should note. So I'd like to, yeah, propose the minutes of the 20s Plenty Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or do I have a second up? Have we a second up to accept those? Councillor Jackson, thank you. Can we all vote on the 20s Plenty minutes? Thank you. Item nine, Faversham Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group. Councillor Owen, I think, I can't see him. Oh, yes. Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Thank you very much. I'll just give you a quick update in terms of what is happening. As you know, we are working in parallel to the development of the local plan at Swale, which is useful in many respects. Just to pick up a theme, I think that was touched on earlier in terms of engagement with Swale Borough Council. The steering group did request a meeting with councillors Baldock and Bonney, who are the Chair and Vice Chair of the local plan panel. Unfortunately, that was declined, which is disappointing. I think they indicated that they didn't have time to meet with all parishes. I'm not quite sure many parishes actually requested a meeting, but it's disappointing that they wouldn't give us a meeting. Not least that very few other parishes are being allocated over 3000 houses. But anyway, in terms of the positives, we have just finished a two-week exhibition and I'd like to thank all of you who participated in that. I know many of you did several sessions. In addition to some members, volunteer members of the community again, who put a lot of time into it. So thank you very much for doing that. It was very successful. It's difficult to tell exactly how many people we got in. We weren't counting them in and out, but we estimate we've got around 400. So we had just short of 300 physical track and trace forms. And we estimate with the electronic track and trace forms, we're probably looking at somewhere around 400. So that's very, very good. And again, thank you all for participating in it. One of the things that we were hoping to achieve from that meeting was to get a sense of where the public preference for development is. And obviously deciding sides isn't within the immediate gift of the neighbourhood plan. That's going to be done by Swale, but quite, I think consistently. And within the steering group, having discussed the feedback, we think that should be to the south and east of the borough, or sorry, of Faversham, within the borough. A couple of other points of note, because they're going to be quite public. The Faversham I have kindly offered us to publish a special on the neighbourhood plan. So that's something we're working towards. We're developing copy, it needs to be in in the next couple of weeks. So I'd like to thank Brian Penn and the team of Faversham I for making that kind offer. I think it goes to, they're printing over 5000 copies, so there's quite a considerable cost to them to do it. One other final thing, we did have a policy planning workshop last week. The purpose of that workshop was really to identify broad policy areas. What we'll do is take that into exhibition two to do two things. One, check with the public that we're focusing on the right areas, the right policy areas. And secondly, under those very broad policy headings, ensure that our thinkings are on the right lines. So we're preparing for workshop two, sorry, for exhibition two, which will begin in just under two weeks' time. So unless there's any questions, I'd like to propose that the council accept the minutes of our meeting on 21st of September.
And councillor Saunders.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think it's very positive that the Faversham I have agreed to have an article about the plan. I'm conscious that some residents of the town might feel it's a fairly partial newspaper, particularly perhaps representatives of parties that aren't actually represented on the town council. Firstly, have you got editorial control over the article that's going in? And also, is there going to be other publicity and other publications? So that it's, you know, information about the plan is going to a wide range of sources.
Yes, so I'll start with your last question first. The answer is yes. You know, we'll seek to communicate as broadly as we can. I think what's unique about the opportunity with the Faversham I is it's not an article. They're actually going to give us an issue of the Faversham I, so I think it's going to run to eight pages. So it's a good opportunity. It was, I believe, the right thing to accept it. I do accept your comment. I think all press is partisan. That's the nature of press. I think Faversham's a broad church, it has people with many political views and people many of no political views. And I think it's really important that we do seek to communicate our plans broadly. We will, in addition to the next exhibition, we will be having a, we'll be running surveys. It's actually in the minutes from November of this year, which will go to every household. Unfortunately, we will be able to get something, I hope, in the Faversham News, but essentially I'm not aware of any other mechanisms to get stuff in the press other than Faversham I and the Faversham News. We obviously have our own newsletter and we have an article. And we have had four, I think, three additions now have had articles in our own newsletter. But I do agree, not everyone reads everything. There's a circulation of 5000. You know, we live in a town of 20,000. We got about 400 into the exhibition, but we will do repeated exercises to ensure that as many people as possible get to make their voice heard.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Owen. Councillor Williams?
Thank you. I just wanted to just to thank those that put together the exhibition. I thought it was very well done. I've very, very positive comments. And I certainly found it very useful speaking to people about it. I mean, I learned a lot from it actually, because I'm not on the steering group. So I don't, you know, I'm trying to keep as connected to it as possible. And obviously, it's a big part of the town council, you know, it's a project the town council is doing. So yeah, I just wanted to raise thanks for that and I will certainly try and help where I can on the next phase two as well.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Have we got a second up to accept the minutes? Councillor Owen proposed that we accept. Have we got a second up? I'm happy to second the minutes. Thank you. And could we all vote? Right, thank you. And I thank councillor Williams. I too wanted to thank, I don't think we've seen behind the scenes the volume of work and hours that councillor Barker and councillor Owen have actually put into this project. I'm sure they haven't kept a record, but it is, I know, taking a lot of time. So well done and thank you. And I'm sure lots of people have, but I know particularly that you have put in an awful lot of hours. Thank you. And Faversham Neighbourhood, so we move on to town council meetings. Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposal on behalf of councillor Thomas, who unfortunately can't join us this evening. It's on the topic of accessibility for town council, full-time council meetings, but also committee meetings as well. I'll read out the proposal to you. It's a proposal in three parts. The first part of the proposal, or the motion, is that this council gives authority to the town clerk to post recordings of both full council and committee meetings of this council to the Faversham Town Council's YouTube channel. So essentially, every meeting will be recorded and posted on YouTube. Second part of the proposal, use Zoom as a default platform for all meetings, as this is the easiest platform for members of the public to speak live. However, have Teams as a fallback platform should Zoom be unsuitable for a particular meeting. So to use Zoom as a default platform. Third element, when using Zoom, permit both live and emailed public questions at full council. Also, at their discretion, permits committee chairs to accept public questions during virtual meetings. Background, with it now being highly likely that we'll be, need to continue with virtual meetings, I believe that we should ensure that our meetings are more easily accessible. Currently, our meetings are recorded but have not yet been made freely available to the public. The town council has recently set up its own YouTube channel. So with the agreement of this council, recordings and meetings can now be shared on this platform. Note well, I've received confirmation that SBC officers may access Zoom via a web browser. However, KCC officers are currently not permitted to download Zoom onto their laptops and I am as yet unaware if they're permitted to use Zoom via a web browser. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Knights?
I like this proposal very much. I think the fact that we were voted in for our transparency and I think this is fair to everybody, it makes it probably as near as can be to face-to-face meetings in the Guildhall. I know some people may be worried about abusive behaviour or people being disruptive, but then that was always the case face-to-face. And if anything, with these type of meetings, there's always a mute button. So if someone does swear or say something that is not acceptable in the public domain, they can be muted. So I'd like to second this proposal, as I think it gives the public the chance to come to our meetings as they did before. And I don't think we should exclude the public if we don't have to, which we don't have to, because we have got the technology. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hook?
Thanks, Mayor. I support it too. I mean, the key point about councillor Thomas's proposal, who sadly can't be with us tonight, is it's about which platform we use. Because up to now, we've used Microsoft Teams, which is not a bad platform and it's used by lots of organisations, public and private. But councillor Thomas is suggesting that where possible, we use Zoom and that will enable us to bring the public in to participate even more. So that whereas at the moment with Teams, the mayor has to read out questions from the public that have been submitted, we're hoping that with Zoom, they'll actually be able to take part if they want to and actually put their questions for themselves. So I think it's a really good suggestion. In terms of meetings we have with other people, it's good to hear that Swale will use Zoom. I think getting Kent County Council to use it will be difficult. Kent take, Kent have very strong rules on their IT systems. And I think the root of that is because they have extremely sensitive data in the organisation, social services records and so on, and have been stung by someone making a simple mistake and an email with very sensitive information being forwarded and the organisation being fined and so on. But we'll do what we can and we'll use Zoom wherever possible. I think it's a really sensible proposal.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, then councillor Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to say that I know this is something we discussed at the last Climate and Biodiversity Committee, because one of the things that I think was really good about the committee when it was in physical form was that we used to have public questions at the beginning, which I know is kind of slightly unusual for a committee. But it did kind of create quite, it did help sort of drive the policy of what we was trying to do there. And it's become quite evident that people have found it quite frustrating. Firstly, being able to get onto Teams, because I think Zoom is a bit more user-friendly. But also that they haven't been able to ask the questions or you get the question afterwards, looking at an email and then you have to wait to the next committee meeting. So I do feel like it's going to make it easier for people to communicate on subjects that really matter to them, which I really think is a good idea. And I think, you know, as long as we monitor it like we would physically, as in, you know, stick to the standing orders etcetera, then I can't see why it would be a major problem. I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Ben Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a quick one from me on this one. Though I do support the idea of utilising Zoom for public meetings, and I think that that needs to be very clear. I think there are still some security concerns around its utilisation for confidential matters. For example, the item that we have further down the meeting after item 12, which excludes press and public. I would therefore suggest that, and I think it's generally understood by all here, but it needs to be made very plain and clear, that where there are those confidential elements to be discussed, those conversations will still take place on Zoom and those And though, I'm sure that's really clear and put out there so that the public are aware. And everyone seems to have frozen, so I'm not sure whether that's got through.
I think it's you. Yes, yes, councillor Martin, it has. Are there any other questions? Councillor Saunders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the concern of members of the council to increase participation in meetings. I think that's a very positive thing to want to do. But I do think we have to balance that with our role as a council. And it's important that we can manage the business of the full council and committee meetings properly and effectively. And so what I'm going to do in a moment is to propose an amendment to this motion. Because I think as it is at the moment, this motion is reckless really. Because what it's, what we will be doing if we vote for this motion in its present form is committing ourselves to using Zoom for a minimum of six months before we can go back and review our motion. And I don't, we haven't been presented with any research into the relative merits of Zoom over Teams. We've actually managed to function, I think, better than a lot of councils with Teams over the last six months. Just a cursory Google search throws up that organisations like the Local Government Association, the Association of Local Councils, identify a number of concerns about using Zoom. I mean, none of that is presented in the motion this evening. We've identified that, yes, Swale might be letting its officers use Zoom, but that doesn't mean it's using it for public meetings. It's been identified that Kent County Council don't use it. I'm not opposed to us using Zoom, but I think we would be sensible to trial using Zoom rather than passing a motion this evening, which seems to commit us to using it as our default platform for all meetings. And, you know, we'd then be tied into doing that for the next six months. So I would like to propose that we retain point A, but that point B, we replace the whole of point B with Gibbs authority for the town clerk to trial the use of Zoom for public council meetings, full stop. And I would propose that we drop point C, because I think our general procedures probably allow us to do those things anyway. So yeah, that would be my proposal, that we amend the motion along those lines.
Thank you, councillor Saunders. Councillor Perkin, did you wish to come in?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just on the point around the LGA not particularly being particularly happy with Zoom. I've been attending LGA meetings on Zoom probably since the beginning of March. So it's interesting that they're not particularly confident with it, but are holding their own meetings through Zoom. It's just a comment really. It's a kind of a step from anything else.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of minded to support the amendment. I think, I think, you know, to reiterate, I think having an open council, having the ability to ask questions, having the ability to follow meetings, having the ability to watch them afterwards is really important. I think what it comes down to, if my reading of it's correct, the only difference between moving to Zoom and the current scenario is that rather than reading questions out, members of the public will have the opportunity to actually ask the questions in person. Apart from that, it's exactly the same, i.e. they can follow the meeting, et cetera. I do think there is potentially, potentially a management, let's call it a call management issue with Zoom, because what our standing orders allow for questions during the meeting. But of course, when you're on a Zoom, and not all the public can see this, but I can see every other councillor's face, what that means is everyone, every member of the public who joins a meeting on Zoom will be on a screen as well. So of course, you can get around that by switching off people's cameras, by muting people centrally, but it's quite complicated. I think, you know, I think we're pretty competent people and I'm quite confident we could manage it appropriately. But I do think it's sensible to maybe trial it first.
Yes.
You know, so on our basis, you know, I would second councillor Saunders' amendment, which simply says we will trial it for a period of time.
Thank you. Any councillor wish to come in? No. My comment would be to the town clerk, and I mean, I know from being mayor that she does have connection with many other town clerks. Has anyone else trialled this? Have you got any information from, or knowledge of how it's worked?
Not specifically with Zoom. I think we can give it a trial and see how it goes.
Yeah, sounds fine. So are we going with the amendment? Yes. And councillor Saunders? Made the amendment and who will second the amendment? Was it councillor Owen? Yes, councillor Owen. Can we all vote on the amendment? I think councillor Martin abstaining. Anyone else abstaining from that?
I am.
Councillor Knight and councillor Hook and Williams, are you abstaining? Yes?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, my thing froze. We're voting on the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment, yes.
Okay, sorry, okay.
And we've had a proposal by councillor Saunders and councillor Owen is seconding. And we need to vote if we are happy with that amendment. Three, four, five pounds, I think I can see. One, two, three, four, five, and six with me. Is that all right, town clerk? Have you got everyone?
That's fine, thanks.
And do we need to go back to the original proposal? Yes, I'm getting a nod. Thank you. So the original proposal. Councillor Owen made the proposal, but he's now amended. Would somebody else like to propose and second the original proposal?
Well, it's the motion as amended, so I think it's got a proposer in form of councillor Owen. So it just needs a second, which I'm happy to do.
Right. And shall we vote on that? Hand up. Yes, and one, two abstain. Did you get that, town clerk? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So can we move forward now on to item 12, which is receipts and payments? Are there any queries? Any councillor? Issue on those? Oh, sorry, we have, I've skipped, you're right. Item 11, I've ticked and I shouldn't have done. Favisham Disability Forum, councillor Perkin, you would like to speak on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the proposal is pretty straightforward in terms of the paperwork that you've all received. I'll quickly talk to it for members of the public. So the social model of disability proposes that what makes someone disabled is not their medical condition, but the attitudes and structures of society. It's a civil rights approach to disability that regards, that, sorry, that recognises that if modern life was set up in a way that was accessible for people with disabilities, that they'd not be excluded or restricted. The distinction is made between impairments, which are individual problems, which may prevent people from doing something, and disability, which is an additional disadvantage given by society, which treats those with impairments as abnormal, thus unnecessarily excluding these people from full community participation. I think that coronavirus has created unprecedented amounts of issues for both society and also for us as policymakers and everyone as any kind of policymaker. But the impact of the crisis has been particularly acute for people with disabilities and their families, which the issues have been, their issues have already been exacerbated and the barriers they've created, there's been a lot of new barriers created. And it has, however, also highlighted how quickly things can change from difficulties that be able to accessing food and essentials to the reductions of very hard-earned rights to positive changes in ways, for example, in how employers have been able to be more flexible and how the community is pulled together to protect our most vulnerable. A lot has changed recently and a survey by the National Charity Scope has showed that 28% of disabled people still feel forgotten about. The idea of the Disability Forum is that it will be created as a reference group to help the town council to listen, learn and consult with people who have disabilities and their carers and those that work with people who have disabilities. It should create an opportunity for disabled people, their carers and disability organisations in the district to come together to consult directly with the council on the services and facilities which affect people with disabilities, provide a collective and stronger voice on all issues of disability to achieve positive outcomes for our community and to work to improve equality for disabled people and improve inclusivity and accessibility within Favisham. The aim of the forum is for it to be community-led with councillor support. So the group should be, sorry, the group should be able to create its own agenda and the councillors can feed into those agendas in terms of consultations and policy ideas moving forward. So yeah, I'd like to present that. I've also published a draft Terms of Reference, which are available as additional paperwork. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Perkin. Would any other councillor like to speak? Councillor Owen?
Yes, I'd just like to say councillor Perkin, I'm very much welcome the initiative. I think it's a great idea. I can only really speak from my own perspective, but, you know, looking with the neighbourhood planning steering group, it's clear that for that group, but of course for every other group, you know, having a standing forum of people we can go and ask advice and run ideas past and get feedback from will really facilitate our work significantly. So I think it's a great idea. I'm sure the full-town council can take advantage of such a group. So I very much welcome it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Right, proposed by councillor Perkin. Oh, no, councillor Knight?
I would just like to say as a blue badge holder, I welcome it and I would like to second it if I may.
Thank you, councillor Knight. And can we all vote on that? Can't see councillor Perkin. Oh, councillor Hook, that's the only one I can't see. Oh, yes, we all, yes, we've all got hands up. Oh, well done. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Perkin. Now we do go on to the receipts now and payments. Are there any queries on those? Councillor Williams?
Thank you. I just wanted to raise a couple of things. One, I'm not sure what the, unless I've missed something in the other paperwork. There's the second item, it says car cover SUV car. I'm not sure what that is, please. It just sounds a bit strange.
It's a new cover for the fire pump.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
So it's a car cover, basically.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I'd like to raise is I, I think this has been mentioned before and I know it's, I know it can be difficult, given cost, also getting things quickly and also the availability of things, but I have a real issue with seeing Amazon on the seats quite often. This is probably just me, but I have a sort of ethical reason for this is that I just feel that Amazon is the sort of company environmentally that we shouldn't support. But also, I feel like there's a kind of a link between purchasing things from companies like Amazon and the demise of the high street. And I just wonder if it's possible, if certain items, I mean, obviously these are kind of quite low, fairly low sort of cost items, but, you know, if there is things that could be sourced from other companies, preferably locally, obviously, or independent businesses, but it's just, it's just a comment I'd like to make, just so that I've got it on record, I've said it. But that's just a view of mine.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Any other comments? Councillor Perkin?
I just want to fully agree with councillor Williams's point.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. Councillor Knight?
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing this up, councillor Williams. If we can support our local companies in absolutely everything we do, from the little purchase right up to the major repairs, I think we need to make sure that as much as possible goes to local companies.
Thank you. Quite agree. Any other councillor? Saunders?
Yeah, I feel synthetic to councillor Williams's comments. And it's possibly something that could come forward as a discussion perhaps, I presume in probably the policy and finance group. So yeah, I think, I think there's, you know, there are strong arguments for ethical purchasing of goods. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Ben Martin?
Thank you. On this one, I do concur, but where Amazon is the only place we can get something at short notice, I would ask whether or not we would consider, I'll declare a bit of an interest on this one, whether we would consider utilizing Amazon Smile in order to benefit some of the local charities that work through that. For example, Favisham Pools has an Amazon Smile account.
Yep, I can confirm that we do use Smile for Favisham Pools.
Thank you. Councillor Hook, did you want to come in on that?
I just wanted to say I completely agree with the principle. I think the practicality is actually very complicated and needs more time to drill into and think about than there is available this evening. I mean, I know, excuse me, 90% of the Amazon packaging is made by DS Smith at their factory in Sittingbourne. And actually, I've visited it, that factory, and it's all made from recycled material. They take carbon dioxide and recycle it. It's fascinating. But Amazon are not ethical in some ways. They avoid tax in an industrial way. And I would say choosing between Amazon and local, it's actually more complicated than that. Because if you choose between Amazon and the local branch of a global supermarket chain, you may still have as many ethical issues. It may also be that if you shop online, there are small suppliers, SMEs, that you can buy the goods from. And again, as with all small businesses, if you put their business there, you're providing a little bit extra for a person to take their family on holiday, for their daughter to have music lessons, for them to be able to have a better Christmas, as opposed to yet another bonus for a CEO who already earns millions. So I think it is more complicated. it is more complicated and sometimes buying online can be the right thing to do. And we've also got to be mindful of our obligations to get best value for the Faversham taxpayers. So I completely agree, we should have ethical purchasing. We ought to think of ourselves as a fair trade. And I just think it's probably going to have to be thought about on a more case-by-case basis. And actually, maybe at some point, it would be appropriate for, in sort of following off from what Ben said, if there's a situation where the council's staff team feel that getting something from Amazon is the best choice because of the speed or because there is such a big price difference between what the council would otherwise have to pay somewhere else, then I think we need to know the details of it. And it would be really interesting to consider it at length. Because if money is saved, that's money we can put to another good purpose. It's not a lot of the rest done.
Absolutely. Thank you councillor Hook. councillor Perkin.
Yeah, thank you councillor Hook. I find what you're saying really interesting, actually. And what, I wonder whether it's worth looking through policy and finance, whether there's some kind of paper that can be drawn up in terms of ethical purchasing and to weigh up the options as a discussion within the council. I don't know how feasible that is, but I think maybe in terms of looking at kind of big purchases, that would be a helpful document to have.
Thank you. councillor Ben Martin.
Yeah, just to concur, I think that's a very valid proposal from councillor Perkin and I'd be happy to second it. I do urge a little caution in that you never know, it may end up with us looking towards having contracts in place, which then make it very difficult to go and buy a pen from down the road, as we've seen in other councils where because you buy so many pens over the year, it hits the tendering contract limit and you now can't go and buy it from your local branch of WH Jones. You have to purchase it from the contract, which is usually the Kent County Council supplier. But yeah, certainly something worth looking at. And if no one's done it, I'm happy to second this, getting these receipts and payments done and dusted.
Thank you. Yes, and we agree there. We've got a second of proposal and a seconder to accept. The proposer was councillor T Martin and B Martin will second. And can we all vote on that? Thank you. Thank you. And now we will withdraw. So thank you to those that have been listening in and goodnight. And then we will talk.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes, sorry. Any other business before we go? Yes, thank you.
I was speaking to this lady on Facebook, Rosalind Bellfield, who works at the Hamilton Care Home, and she was putting it out there, asking if anyone could supply any photographs or any memorabilia that she could show Brian, who's 89, who's got dementia in her home. And she was stating that there's so many people who can't see family and they feel so isolated. And when they see photographs of their hometowns, they light up. And so I contacted this lady and wondered if I could put the proposal to the town council. And perhaps I did find out that actually she's in Canterbury, the care home, but he's lived all his 89 years in Faversham. Whether we could put a podcast together, which is something I think would be great for us as a council, anyway, to have more moving images on our website, of a podcast of memories of Faversham, certainly for this gentleman, 1931 to present day, even, you know, there'll be in the archives somewhere of past festivals, the street scene, everything that's happened over the last, of his last 89 years, that I was wondering if Brooke, I did speak to her today, if she'd be happy to do something like this, that a podcast could be put together, it could be uploaded onto our website, then every care home, Faversham or wherever they are who used to live in Faversham, it could be sent to them and make them happier and give them their memories because they do live on the long-term memory. So I wonder if this is something that the council would be pleased to take up.
We could look into. councillor Martin, T Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know this is a very unusual request and we can't make a decision on this as it's not on the agenda, but may I suggest that this goes to the Faversham Marketing Group, the town council's marketing group at the earliest opportunity, because that being a working party could actually get this off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds great. Thank you very much then. Any other business? No. Thank you very much, everyone, and for those that were listening in, and we will move now into private session. Thank you. Good night.